Please. To offend you. Please excuse yourself from the room and then return when we're starting meeting. Laura.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you leave some prayer, please?
Father God, be come to you in the name of Jesus, asking for your protection, for your guidance, for your wisdom. For your grace, Lord, upon the city council, upon the city of Montevista. On the state of Colorado, in mighty name of Jesus, we pray.
You need a roll call, please?
Counselor Howard.
I'm here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segala.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, there's one modification to the agenda. We'd like to remove staff proposal and reports. Um, N two kids connection.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to modify the agenda to remove N two staff proposal reports and actions. Um, kids connection be removed from that. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing N two kids staff report, kids connection staff report.
We will consent agenda minutes a regular meeting from December fifth, twenty twenty four. Approval of counts payable.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from December fifth, twenty twenty four, and approved of approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, confirmation, communication, appointments, none, so some comments. Josh, will you have citizen comment?
Uh, no, sir.
Well, we'll move on to scheduled scheduled appearances then. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, it has to be filed with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. ADA presentation from Deputy Clerk Sarah Doyle.
Good evening. I am Sarah Doyle, Deputy Clerk. I am on the ADA coordination team. And I've been tasked with learning the software program we'll be using to make sure everything is. Um, accessible digitally on our websites, so. It is a comprehensive software, um, and I made a PowerPoint. It tried to be kind of brief, but it is very involved, so it's it's not brief, but um, I'll I'll try to be quick. Um, but I know this has been on everyone's radar for a while now. I've been sent on T trips, uh, both of them were two day classes and their introduction classes where the instructor will work through. The basic functions of the software, so I got to actually do them as they did it like together, so. Um, I thought I'd do an overview. It's a yeah comprehensive accessibility software designed to remediate, providing access to digital information. The program operates as a nested structure, um, in which the user can format information into customized. Um, yeah, sorry, reading order, um, but you can go on to the next one, which I actually have this, so I can do that, too. I know you all are familiar with the laws and thank goodness there is a good faith. Effort we can have, um, during this grace period, so July. Twenty twenty five is when things will have to be in effect. Um, so we still have good time for this to be learned and put into motion. Um, so those are our laws, and if you want a copy. Of the PowerPoint, me and I have that available for you at any time. I will go on to say that. There are some things that protect us, such as having a statement on our website, um, showing that we have a plan in motion and action. Um, and we're documenting all of our progress. Um, and the city of Englewood, I learned this at the CMCA conference, has put into effect a department championship program. Where each, um, department has a liaison who has to learn the software and make sure everything is compliant. So, um, is out of their job description, um, that they have to be available to. Answer all any and all questions as well as make sure that that is is being done. Um, so I hope we can adopt a similar kind of thing, I would, I would say. Um. And. There are four principles of digital accessibility, and those are called the four principles. Um, so. Let's see, so I have my notes here. Four, first of, the key is information and user interface components must be presentable to users in ways they can perceive. So they can't be invisible to all senses, such as light and sound. Um, and operable is user interface components and navigation must be operable in the sense that. People must be able to navigate and interact with the content in all in all ways as far as senses. And then there's a general guideline, um, with understandable, which means. It kind of has to be written in a content manner of seventh or eighth grade reading level, so that everyone can comprehend it. Um, so it's encouraged to make sure everything is digestible, um, the way it's formatted, um. So. Those are her principles. There's, um, over one billion people with some form of disability. Um, that's one in seven and two eighty, two hundred and eighty-five million are visually impaired. And three hundred and sixty million suffer from hearing loss, so these are people that need to be considered as far as access to all all information. Um, now on to the software, so it's a top tab tree. And it's an essence structure full of specifically designed components that hold customizable content elements known as tags. Each tab must be modified manually by the user despite the given presets. Those are only there to serve as a guide to build off of. So it's a very involved, each detail counts, um. And down below is just an example of all the. Types of tabs there are, which each thing gets its own specific tag, um. So, for example, there's heading tabs which help navigate, there's list tags, paragraph tags, table contents tags. And so on, it goes on for a bit, um. And it's important to realize that. Um, there are subcategories, so there's parent categories and children categories, and those are all nested inside, so it can keep opening up. An example of that would be this right here, where it's just a short clip, twenty seconds maximum. Where I can show you how the tag tree works in the software. Um. And did a screen recording of it, so this is just me messing around with the software itself, but as you see. I can highlight the whole entire table of contents and it will open up. What that does to the tax tree and it even goes deeper in, um. So in order for the technology to work, everything has to be coded and programmed. Um, correctly, and then the technology, um, can read, the screen reader can read to the user or the reader. Um, so there's that, and there's a lot of elements in mind, such as reading order, heading structure. Um, consistent layouts, keeping everything the same, like, for example, in my PowerPoint, I have. Um, everything separated and in box lines and the contrast is white and. It's pretty, and that passes the check, there's like a. A tool you can use to make sure all the contrast is is compliant. So there are like tools that you can use, um. But elements such as headings and fonts, contrast, spacing and reading order must all be taken into consideration. Um, headings specifically are to assist the technology, what bookmarks are to people and act as an outline, so feel them can jump. Through the document. You know, judging on how they want to do it, where they want to go, what information they need, so they don't have to go through. Every single thing, they can jump to the next one, depending on how you tagged a heading. So, um, and not all images and decorations have to be tagged, they can be. What you call artifacted, which is just a matter of. Um, saying this is not important, you know, it doesn't convey information, so. We don't have to take down all of our decorations or our images that dump our information on our website, so this can be left alone, they can stay up. But things like logos will have to be tagged, and that's just just so that they can be read by the technology. Um. So to continue on, here's an example of how to tag. Um, figures that convey information. Uh, so it's easy to go down to the figure and highlight it, and then. You're going to insert or convert a tag, and once you do that, it will pop up a other box. That you can type in the information describing what the figure holds. Which is nice, keeps it kind of simple, actually, in that in that regard. Um, so that's how you tag a figure. And then here's another tool in the software, it's called the table editor, so even things like tables have to be tagged with their. With their specific tags, um, in elements. And that's not a video, that's just an image, because that's very complicated, but it's an idea. Um. And then, once everything has been tagged appropriately, you have to run a standards check. Which is a very involved process where, um, actually have a video example of it, but. What happens is. It runs two different kinds of standards, um, there's ISO three two zero zero dash one and WIGAB two point two double A. And those are what I've been taught that you should always use at the end of the report, even if the requirement on this two point one double A. This, um, is just the most widely accepted standard, um, as far as what's expected of you. Um, luckily, AAA is not expected of you because it's not always achievable, so there is like a some little some little room there. Um. But it is a lengthy process, and I'm confident, though, that I can get it down with with practice, and. I'm really glad I have time to, um. To start honing it. Um. But. Uh, so there's the standards check video, and. After you make sure everything is compliant and you go through each one that the software cannot validate itself. Um, it's all user verified as far as past or you address whatever needs to be addressed. You would then run a. Compliance report, which is for accountability and liability purposes, to prove that we did go through the process of remediating this document. And achieved compliance, and we can show everyone that it has been done, and it is, um. It's for legal purposes, so with each document, you have to do a report, and that is generated luckily. Already acceptable, so don't have to re-immediate the report itself. And that, um, here's an example of how that works, once you generate that. Um, so it's it's involved, it's lengthy, but it's nice to have. The software to address everything, and we're not alone in this either. Uh, in this class, there were people from. All types of corporations, such as, um, like higher education, finance, healthcare, um. All sorts of backgrounds, even people in law enforcement were there, it was a very mixed crowd of people trying to learn all of this, um. But, yeah, um, this is where I'm at, as far as. As far as learning ADA compliance software programming, and it's it's something I. I know I can do, I just need to do it all the time, so I I mean, I'm just changing it. Um, but yeah, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, but, um, I am still getting familiar with with the program itself. So. We're on the job, yeah, me, you, and Brandon Guy, it goes, we're all keeping it, yeah, top of. Our heads. So.
Well, thank you for your commandment tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to be here, thank you for, yeah, having me. Okay, all right, um, and with that, I think I'm going to step down and, um. I think I'm leaving, I'm gonna go on, but, um.
Sarah, have a good weekend, thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Okay, that was a little rocky, but thank you so much.
You did very good.
Thank you. Wow, thank you, Sarah.
Here's that bubbly little thing. Resolution. Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen budget amendment for the twenty twenty four budget. Judy.
Finally, I have your budget amendment go in here, so. There we go, resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen, a resolution to amend sums of money for the twenty twenty four budget. Now that it's almost over. Uh, whereas the city council and city of Montevista has conducted a public hearing to review the proposed twenty twenty four budget in accordance with the. Home Rule Charter and approved on the twenty twenty four budget on November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. And whereas the city of Montevista has made provisions therein for revenues in an amount equal to or greater than total proposed. Expenditures as set forth in said budget. And whereas it is not only required by law and the city of Montevista Home Rule Charter. But also, if necessary, amend the revenues and expenditures provided in the budget. And for the purpose described below as not to impair the operation of the city. And now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Montevista. We're going to amend the appropriation of funds, the following sums are hereby appropriated for the following funds, I'm not going to read. Everything, I'm just going to read the increase and decrease lines. General fund increase, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Conservation Trust Fund, a hundred and forty thousand increase. Urban Renewal Authority decreased thirty thousand dollars. Uh, Kids Connection increased thirty-two thousand, three ninety-four. Uh. Water Fund decreased four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Uh, Sewer Fund increased thirty thousand, four seventy-nine, capital projects increased sixteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety expenditures. Uh, increase in the general fund, two hundred and forty-seven, eight eighty-seven. Conservation Trust, a hundred and forty thousand, Urban Renewal decreased thirty thousand. Kids Connection increased thirty-two, three ninety-four. Water Fund decreased four six, the six, two seventy, Sewer Fund. Increased twenty-seven, four fourteen, and Capital Project Fund, we're going to increase sixteen, eight ninety. Um, this is going to result in year-end cash reserve of an increase of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars in the general fund. An increase in the Water Fund, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three, and an increase in the Sewer Fund, three thousand, sixty-five. Uh, do I have to read the next two? Any questions? If I can. Quiet group.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four sixteen budget amendment for the twenty twenty four budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen budget amendment for the twenty twenty four budget, is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen budget amendment for the twenty twenty four budget. No, we already signed it.
Did you sign it?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow.
Always being hopeful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen, a resolution approving the done, the denial of right-of-way permits from December first to March fifteenth annually.
Instead of jumping into reading it, did you guys have any questions before I read the resolution? Because you haven't, I don't think you guys have heard about it before, other than what's in the packet, so. Do you have any questions? I will answer those first and then read it.
Has it been a big issue?
Uh, it is, it is, uh, we're seeing more and more. People traveling in from outside the valley to do these boring jobs, and if they do it when it's frozen. And it breaks up the ground around it, and then when it settles, we have road issues, sidewalks falling, and those companies are already gone by the time we find out it's an issue. Uh, so by preventing them from doing it while we're in our cold freeze, it'll help with our maintenance costs and our overall problems, like as we move into spring and summer. So it is, it is becoming an issue. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and read it. A resolution of the city council, the city of Montevista, Colorado, approving the denial of right-of-way permits from December first to March fifteenth annually. Whereas to preserve the original investment of the roadway system within the city of Montevista. Minimize the disruption and maximize the safety of of to the traveling public caused by construction. And reduce future maintenance problems, and whereas advocates of right-of-way permits must plan for adequate time for review, approval, and completion, and. Whereas the city of Montevista will refrain from approving permits involving. Excavation, trenching, paving, landscaping, or other operations that would disrupt traffic flow or. Create safety hazards on public roadways due to snow and ice accumulation between December first and March fifteenth, and. Now for, let it be resolved. By the city council, the city of Montevista, the city council of Montevista believes it is important to preserve our roadways and maximize the safety of the public, and. Instructs the right-of-way applicants to plan adequately, and. City of Montevista fully supports the denial of right-of-way permits during the period of. December first to March fifteenth while making exceptions for emergencies on a case-by-case basis.
Well, there is exception for emergencies.
Yes, and this only is for roadways, this doesn't prevent, like, people living homes, people on dirt lots, it's only for anything that goes into a a right-of-way.
Right.
And he won't start this until after January, obviously, we won't do anything this weekend, or. But he won't cut off anything that's already scheduled, just he won't approve anymore.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four seventeen. A resolution approving the denial of right-of-way permits from December first to March fifteenth annually. Second that. It's been moved and seconded. And approve resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen, the resolution approving the denial of right-of-way permits from December first to March fifteenth annually. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash seventeen. A resolution approving the denial of right-of-way permits from December first to March fifteenth annually.
Thank you, DJ. Now, contracts, agreements, and leases, the judge's contract.
But we discussed this a little bit the last time, our last meeting, and about putting out the RFP. For. Contract services for a municipal judge. Judge Zollers has written a letter requesting that we extend it one year. And. That will, and and I agree with her, um. You know, we were behind the eight ball on getting this out. Even if we did go ahead and. Do an RFP now, if we probably would not have anything until the middle or end of March. You all do the interviews for that, and so I think that. Um. She's not interested in submitting a proposal. After the, after a year extension, and so, um, I would like to do that, and. Already put it on my. Calendar for the first of August to make sure that we get this out, so you guys can do your interviews.
Now, we will keep this from being pinned in. Any court cases, any event that.
That's right, and we can still do our work session, listen to her ideas that she has for juvenile. Um, detention and and that sort of thing.
So I make that motion to extend Judge Zollers' contract for the calendar year twenty twenty five, started January one, twenty twenty five, ending. December thirty-one, twenty twenty five, second.
It's been moved and seconded to go ahead and approve Judge Zollers' contract from. January first, twenty twenty five, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to extend Judge Zollers' contract till twenty twenty five, December thirty-first.
So I'd like to expand on on that a little bit. You know, our PD. Our building, we are the only. Juvenile holding facility in the San Luis Valley. Whereas if. Alamosa Sheriff's Office picks up a juvenile, they have to be transported to Pueblo within twenty-four hours. Give or take. And, um. And so. The. Agency that brings in a juvenile. Has to hire a security company that then sits there and just basically makes sure that they. The kid doesn't run down the hall or try to escape or whatever. We had an incident last week where. Um. Is it Rio Grande Sheriff's Office?
Almost the sheriff's.
Yeah, Alamosa SO brought in a young man, who's a frequent attendant. And he just walked into the room where the security guard was sitting. And opened the window, kicked out or punched out the screen and ran away. And so, we are ha- going to have some serious discussions with probation, and they're the ones that kind of set up this program. And, um. The agreements that we have, I don't think are strong enough, like, when they do cause damage. I'm going to expect that agency to, um. Pay for the damages. You know, a brand-new screen out of our brand-new windows is now. A mess. And, um, I think we need to. Sit down and have a stricter discussion with them. Our rules say that that that. Security company can. Um, detain the person. The officer that was watching. He was, he's actually an officer, but he was working as his own security company. Said that he's not supposed to stop him. Why are we doing this? So. Um. If they're going to tear things up and not take the responsibility for paying for it, then I don't think that we should be continuing with this program. But that also means then that somebody has to take that child, that juvenile, to Pueblo. In a more timely manner, so.
Okay.
The balancing act.
Yeah. Thank you, GD. We're going to go on with the staff proposals, reports, and actions. Recreation, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Good evening, how are you, Mr. Taylor? I'm doing wonderful. Score is zero, zero.
That's why you're being quiet back there, you're watching the game.
No, 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 I wasn't paying attention. My boss was speaking, I was paying attention. So right now, we have boys basketball going on, um, and, uh, first and second grade is co-ed, um, it's probably most teams that, um. We've had since I've been here, we have three first and second grade teams, and we could probably make a fourth, we probably have twelve kids. On each team, which is a little bit too many, probably, and that, so it's awesome with our registration, what's going on with the basketball program. Fifth and sixth grade also has three teams, now we'll probably make, um, a four-team there as well. Um, the floors go down on, uh, Sunday at seven AM. So most of the games and practices will be at Sky High for that program, which is awesome. Um. We are also going to have a hunter safety class, January fourth and fifth, for everyone, um, and it's a free class. That's open to the public, and we'll be having the gun safety on December twenty-eighth. Um. At from eleven to two, it's seventy-five dollars for that course. We're also having a holiday food box giveaway tomorrow from eleven to three at Sky High. We're hoping it'll last an hour, we have a hundred and fifty bags that we give away, um, all right. Is that, is that, I need to sit down. Not on my head?
Then you're done.
Um. So we have a hundred and fifty.
Let me just explain that. That's an important phone, I'd never turn it off. Oh, no, you apologize for this, love the name.
It's government. You're good, I'll ready to sit down. Um, so the Lore Foundation funded this program, uh, and it gave us five thousand dollars to give away the baskets, and the baskets can include. Cream mushroom, green beans, French onion, I'm sorry, French fried onions, a packet of gravy, ten-pound potato bag. Uh, rolls, a farmland, a farmland ham, and a pie, so it's a pretty good basket in that, uh, coordinated with, uh, us. Uh. Pop Value made huge donation, uh, along with the Lore Foundation and the SLB Community Solutions, which is the Veterans Association. And that, so we'll be giving out baskets tomorrow. Um. At starting at eleven, and we're only expecting it to be short time, because we only have a hundred and fifty baskets, so should be lots of fun.
Durbin. One package of gravy is not enough for ten pounds of potatoes.
GD, I don't like gravy with my potatoes.
They could all be baked.
Always that one person in the crowd, you know, and I, I'll set one. That's all I have, any questions for me?
Just make sure her basket has two gravies. Are you needing any help with that tomorrow, or you got it covered?
Oh, no, sure, come on out. Anyone that wants to help, be more than welcome. Anyone that wants to help, be more than welcome. So come on down. No, so. You know what I'm getting, GG for Christmas? Gravy. Thank you, two, two bags, two packs, two packs. So I know she has no potatoes.
Thank you, Durbin. Uh, Sky High. Miss Stephanie.
Good evening, Council. Um start you off with some numbers, we ended November with sixty events. Um we're hoping to end December with forty nine events, we'll see if we have a few more days left. Um so far in January, we already have sixty events booked. Um as of right now, we did have a few cancellations in December for events, um so our numbers dropped a little bit. Excuse me, um so for twenty twenty four, we have five hundred and twenty three events. Um and already for twenty twenty five, we have two hundred and forty one.
How far out?
Scares me, that's the full year.
So far.
Yep.
Cool.
So that scared me, um. Our last big event was the Holiday Bazaar, um great attendance, um DJ got me some rough numbers, so we had about twenty eight hundred people over the three days. Um so that was a really good turnout, he he has more numbers for you after me, so I won't go too much into that and let him describe that for you. Um December's gone crazy for us. Uh we did thirty events in the first two weeks, then we had twelve days straight of events. Um so my staff is ready to just drop dead and have their Christmas holiday. Um we have five more events left this year. And then we're gonna clean and get ready for the new year. Um we did decide to go ahead and cancel our open walking for the next week. Um so they had it tonight and then we won't open open walking again until January second. So we're gonna let everybody enjoy their holidays and then we'll start fresh with everybody's new year resolutions. Um we have two bigish events coming up, um the Monavista PD coordinated to do a training for all law enforcement. Um and it is going to be for Mexican cartel and narco culture. Um so that's gonna be for a full week in January, um so we'll have some really interesting information come out of that. And then mark your calendars, a conference is coming up already, February fourth through the sixth. Questions?
Uh the numbers do you have for next year already, is that? Ahead of where you're at this year?
I would have to go back and double check, I do not have that information off the top of my head.
I would like you to clarify, when you say events, does that, is that your events as well as recre-
Every single event that is on the Sky High property.
So that includes like the Sky High walking? That's counted as an event?
And how I classify an event is. Do we have to provide utilities? Does it have to be staffed? Are we using any type of city resources? That is an event. Whether it is open walking, a basketball game, a birthday party, a wedding, a rodeo, uh. It's taking our resources, that is an event. Any other questions? Thank you.
Well, thanks, Stephanie. Planning.
Sorry, I stepped out, my son called because he wanted to let me let me know the Broncos have scored. So it's kind of seven zero. And.
Thank you guys.
And took it, so I can't watch it anymore, so. Had to get a score update, sorry, so it's not seven zero, we're winning. Um so, okay, so this month, uh planning and zoning, mostly been keeping mine and Michelle's head down, we've been doing a lot of writing, um trying to get some of the. The pro- projects that we've been doing done. And getting ready for a ton of grant management coming into next year. Uh most of our grants are now under contract and we're so we're now doing kickoff meetings and doing all the management side of that. As well as looking for new opportunities to build projects two to five years out. Uh I finally feel like I'm at a place where I can start looking at strategically planning grants instead of saying, this money is available, we can do this now. So now we're looking two to five years out for our next projects. Um so that's where we're gonna be at from here out, um my work with P and Z on continues on the land use code. Our progress is steady, we're attempting to consolidate all feedback into a Google document. To reduce the amount of time to read the same paragraphs over and over when somebody else is like, but I have an idea, or. The next meeting they come in and they have something that they want to address it, so we're putting it onto a Google document. That way it can be reviewed one time instead of multiple times it's reviewed law. Um by all commissioners, staff and contractors. Uh so this month, instead of going over the various projects. Um I felt like those first things were kind of important, but. Uh most months I just kind of gave you an overview and I kind of wanted to look at more on the community development side this month. Um and talk about some trends, community owner looks at, you know, the trends, be it social, economical. The ecological that are going to affect the future and how can we plan and develop and make the things happen inside the city? So that we can meet the needs and desires of the residents. And that's what my job is to make sure that I look at those trends and identify what we can do to make the city better. So I looked at um the Holiday Bazaar, the the December first weekend in June. Um because looking at the economic impact of these events and how do we work together in time to make them the the most advantageous as we can. Um so it's really hard to actually say it brought us. Two million dollars, which it did, but it's hard to say that because. The math is all done somewhere else and then it goes to Rio Grande County and then it comes to us. Uh so it's really hard to say how much actual economic impact we had. Um statistics are very pliable, data is a pretty rock solid thing, so. I use uh PlaceRai, which is a location analytics platform. And identifies cell phones, it uses them and you can set certain parameters, so every parameter I set sets it at, if a cell phone sits for ten minutes. Then it'll log that location, if. It stays for eight hours during the workday, that's considered work. If it stays for eight hours at night, that's considered home and it goes off pattern, so if you stay at a hotel, it doesn't change your home location. It's a pattern of thirty days changes your home location. Uh so that's how the platform works, that's how I got the following numbers. So it's not anecdotal, it's not statistics, it is true data from cell phones. Um the only statistic I'll give you is that there are one hundred and thirteen cell phones for every one hundred people above the age of five. So figure there's about a one point eight percent variance. Uh in amount of cell phones versus people and that includes all the way down to children. Um so before we were like, well, we'll just keep it all, um. Because you know, there's some that don't have and there's some that carry two. I'm sorry, one point eight percent is not a large enough statistical anomaly for me to worry about, so we're just gonna use the whole numbers that are there. So there were. There are an average of. Five hundred and eighty eight cell phones per hour in our commercial downtown district every weekend of the year. That's what the average is over the entire time. With a total of two thousand unique cell phones entering and staying in the downtown district for more than ten minutes. That excludes the workers and people that live in the CB district, that's just actually unique cell phones that come to the downtown for ten minutes. Um now if we look at what happened over the December first. There were. An average. Of one thousand two hundred and sixty two cell phones per hour in the commercial districts between eight AM and seven PM, the first week of December. So that's more than a hundred percent jump over the course of one weekend. Um the. Eight thousand one hundred unique visits is a twenty nine percent. Uh it's more than that, I'm sorry. I had the wrong estimate there, so it's eight thousand one hundred unique visits over the course of the entire weekend. So we go from two thousand to eight thousand one hundred that stayed more than ten minutes in a given weekend, so that's a pretty significant jump. With the peak numbers of thirty four hundred phones onsite between five and seven PM on average. So that means from the tree lighting until the parade was over, there was an average of three thousand four hundred cell phones in our commercial business district. Uh now if we look back, so are we doing good, are we doing bad, that's kind of like the trend, right? In twenty twenty three, between six and seven, there were twenty four hundred phones and forty eight hundred phones over the course of the weekend. Before, the year before that, it was twenty one hundred and forty eight hundred respectively. So if you take those numbers for the parade itself and you remove them from the last two years, it's no higher than the statistical average. Uh you know, this year we had a very, very large bump and I think it is large part due to the lights, co-locating the bazaar, the parade. And the lighting all in the same weekend, the same time, we brought in a lot of people from outside. Now, that's a huge amount of traffic, but traffic doesn't mean they spent money, right? So from what, just having them there, looking at where'd they come from and where'd they go? Uh it's it's kind of an important piece. Um because if they just come, they come for their thirty minutes of the parade and then they leave, did we really gain anything by having that traffic? Uh so. If we look at twenty twenty two. The year there were. The top ten locations, thirty six percent came from Monavista Homes and Works, ten percent came from Alamoosa and six point seven percent came from Center. So the top ten lo- uh locations that came from, that was it. Um and then from the events, forty five percent went to either a home or restaurant in Monavista, seventy one percent went to Center, fourteen went to uh. I'm sorry, seventeen went to Center, four percent went to Alamoosa and three point two percent went to Solatch. Um so they just, basically they came, they watched it, they left. Um except for about half of them and about half of the ones, it's the forty five percent, about half of them went home and half of them went to restaurants or Safeway. Safeway was a big one that that year. Fast forward to twenty twenty six or twenty twenty four. Only sixty two or twenty six percent came from Monavista, eleven percent came from Alamoosa and three percent came from Center. And the rest of all the people came from smaller percentages, different zip codes all throughout. Um so it definitely spread out our influence for how, where people came from. But the biggest thing is of the top ten places. All of the top ten places, they went after the fact, all of them were either Monavista. Except for two of them were in Alamoosa. The two that were in Alamoosa was Chili's and their home. Those are the, out of the top ten, everybody either stayed in Monavista, went home to a restaurant or to a store. And the rest of them all either went home or to Chili's for the top ten locations. Uh so that was a pretty significant change between. Two thousand and twenty two to two thousand and twenty four, not only did we bring them here, we kept them, they spent money at restaurants, they spent money at stores and then they went home later. That doesn't track the secondary and tertiary effects. Um but it does give you at least their location right after that. So as she said, this year the bazaar had twenty eight hundred. People that showed up significantly up from twenty twenty two at twenty two hundred people. And then twenty twenty three had twenty seven hundred. Um some statistics, uh and some of the interest that we've had as far as the overall dollars and cents, we went from thirty five vendors in twenty twenty one. To sixty four in twenty two, hundred and seventeen in twenty twenty three. And they cut it off at a hundred and twenty five, this year they sold out. Um so now we have a very full event. We have more people coming from elsewhere that are stopping, staying and spending money. Um so it shows that tying the events together to where it's a multi-day, to where it it covers lots of different times. And it captures different age groups, shows that it can pro- provide economic dollars, how much, I can't prove that. But I can say that they at least stopped at the next place I was here in Monavista, which is the goal for tourism, you don't not just want them to come by, you want them to come by and stay. So that's the information I have on that, um. And. After that report, I I have a ton, like I could, I could go statistics, I've been bugging GGL because I've prepared some of this every day, um. I can do more of these kinds of things, I can go over. The big five events that uh Sky High has and show you, hey, here's all of them numbers and this is where all that stuff is, I can show you trends um throughout the city throughout the year. Um and I can give you those kinds of data, those are things that you're interested in. Um I can provide some screenshots throughout the year, uh. Some of the interesting ones, as I was pointing, this data is, the Holiday Bazaar is the second biggest event in Monavista, only fought, only beaten by Stampede. Um it it was larger than Crane Festival. Um it was larger than Ag, uh as far as the people that came downtown, it was the second largest event in in Moni throughout the year. So, kind of important stuff to know from a planning perspective. Any questions about any of that?
Where do you get this, where do you get this information?
PlaceRai, it's a platform we pay for in conjunction with Rio County Tourism Board. Um and it tracks cell phone, uh if your location's turned on, it tracks your cell phone data. And then it goes through third party and comes back. It's creepy.
You wonder what her big brother looks like?
It it does provide some really cool stuff, I I can give you some really cool statistics as far as like our Safeway. Only about a third of the money they get spent in our Safeway comes from the city of Monavista. Um Centers to Watch, Del Norte, they all travel here to shop at our Safeway. Um and I can give you numbers and dollar amounts on that kind of stuff, so it does give us some really good data as far as where we're seeing the traffic and all of that. Um so I I I really like this platform. Um and it makes my nerd happy. Any questions? Thanks, guys.
Thank you, DJ.
I think next time, DJ, you need to show them kind of the uh. The math. Cause it goes by day and so. Like Christmas Day.
Might have thirty nine people on downtown on Christmas last year.
It's dead. And so you can see these peaks of when people are in town and when they're not downtown.
City Attorney. So in uh uni-court, uh we had. Nineteen cases, which is way down from what we usually experience, you know, it was the usual thing, um kind of um. Assaults and trespasses and theft and. Dogs running around. Somebody's cat ate these park rats in a pear tree out here, so she didn't follow that. And then uh other than that, we uh. We were starting to work on the Tim's situation, uh. The Temporary Emergency Medical Services, Josh has been working on that, and so we met and we were beginning to. About to outline a. Form of contract there, Josh wants a little more time on that, uh so we're gonna defer that uh till sometime in January, probably when. He uh comes up with uh. Some of the issues, I think, on insurance and so forth. So uh we've had to. We've had to defer some of our uh work that we're gonna do on the land use code, uh because just about all my time uh. Past. Month almost has been devoted to issues uh that we're gonna discuss later on the executive session tonight, so. That's where that's going, so that's about it. Did you, manager, report?
We sent a text. Person that's gonna be joining us here in a few minutes.
Is that boring? For these phone?
What?
I just asked. Actually sending a text to the. Person that's gonna be on Zoom and I was wondering if it was, she was texting you on your phone. That's why I was wondering, I was waiting for it to go off.
Like a super emergency red phone out of the other pockets, hold on, it's president.
So let's go. We've just been trying to wrap up the year, so. Little meetings hit and miss. I met with the golf course building committee last night. They are. With the grant funds that they got from DOLA. Well, another the city got from the, for DOLA. They are scheduled. To break ground like Marchish. And so they're ready, ready to move, so it's really pretty darn exciting. I did, Adam Locke is still doing podcasts for the radio station. And so I did a wrap up of the city. And kind of what we're looking at into this next year, so that will be airing in the next couple of days. And then the city is closed. One of the holidays that you guys give us is December the twenty fourth. So we'll have the office open next week, Monday and Thursday. That's it.
That's all you got?
Oh my god. It's been kind of a. Interesting. Month.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, thank you, Gigi.
And and next, the next meeting, I'll give a kind of a year wrap up.
On your sticky note.
On my sticky note.
Right, Council Committee, City Commission and Council Reports. Oh. Merry Christmas, everybody.
I feel like you're judging us.
Let me pull my paperwork out. I really don't have a bunch either, uh Great Lights was a great event, all the stuff that was going on that weekend and thanks to the. City for all that they did for that, um we had the city.
city for all that they did for that, um, we had the city employee appreciation lunch yesterday. And it was unique when we walked in, cause everybody came setting their own little groups. PD, Public Works, Marks and Rec. And then the city hall folks, but comments from every group talked about the teamwork that it took. Stephanie with PD, Stephanie with Public Works, the PD, the Public Works, Public Works with the PD, it was great to hear that, so. Um, that, what I'm gonna say is money strong. That's it, and see something, say something, really be dil- diligent to say something. Okay? So with that, I request a uh, motion going to executive session. Let's see what's forward, ma'am.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Merry Christmas. What?
All four of you are watching the game.
Yeah. I made a motion to go into executive session and with the city attorney first, receiving legal advice on with specific legal questions under CRS section twenty four dash six dash point two four B. And for discussion, the specified details of security arrangements and investigation under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four D regarding administrative matters with the city.
Second. Then moved in second to go into executive session. For a conference of the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four zero two four B and for discussion of specialized details of security arrangement arrangements or investigations under CRS section twenty four dash six dash four oh two four D regarding administrative matters with the city. Anita?
Counsel Howard?
Yes.
Counsel Lorenz?
Yes.
Counsel Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to go into executive session as stated, at this time I will stop the Zoom and go into the executive session Zoom.